Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is June 18th, 2019. It's about 5:35 PM. The first presentation is a proclamation recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera will present a proclamation to Parks, Community Services, and Trails Committee Chair Christopher Melendez.
Good evening. It is my pleasure today to present a proclamation recognizing our Parks and Recreation Month. If Mr. Chairman Christopher Melendez could please join me up here. If we can give him a round of applause, please. Our Parks and Community Services staff collectively provide fun and safe activities for our residents and the spaces to enjoy the outdoors while reaping the physical and emotional health benefits that citizens may gain by partaking recreational activities outdoors. The resources offered by our Parks and Community Services Department help our residents to broaden their social networks, reduce stress, increase resiliency, and help younger citizens to prevent backsliding during breaks from school. That's very, very important. A lot of these programs, like the free lunches in the parks and different things like that, the Movil movies, Movil Rocks, do keep our youth off of the street and provide them with another path to stay occupied, to stay out of trouble. And so that's part of why we're giving this proclamation today. Additionally, some of our recreation programs ensure that children who come from economically disadvantaged homes receive balanced and nutritious meals during the summer. Parks and Recreation Month is also a celebration of the raw natural beauty that our country possesses and is a call to preserve the natural environments for the enjoyment of future generations. In light of all the important benefits of parks and recreation, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley recognize our Parks and Recreation Department today. And if everyone from Parks can please come up. Patty Solano, please call everybody up here. If we can give them a round of applause as well. And I will present this proclamation here this evening to our Chairman of Parks and Recreation Committee. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of our community and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetation buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff does hereby proclaim this month of June as Parks and Recreation Month and pay tribute to our Parks and Community Services Department professionals, managers, and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to our community and quality of life here on June 18th of 2019." And I would like to give an opportunity for Christopher Melendez to say a few words and also Patty Solano right after if you would like to share a few words.
I wasn't really expecting this, so... So I actually just became person or chairman of the committee, believe, a couple of weeks ago, so, thank you. Well, one of the main reasons why I joined this was because I have three kids at home. They're still little ones, so we're gonna be growing up in the city. We don't plan on leaving the city. And the city actually has a lot to offer. And me going out to the different events and showing, I mean, I grew up here and I didn't really know a lot of the different events we actually had, so I want to become a really big advocate in showing the community what we can actually have to show. So when people say things about Moreno Valley, I can actually back it up and say there's a lot of things that we're trying to provide for the kids. And working with Patty and with the team, I'm still trying to get to know everybody, so it's been an honor working with you guys. And I'm gonna continue doing this for the next couple of years or even longer than that.
I'd like to thank the Mayor, even though he's not present right now, and Mayor Protem and the City Council. They've supported us this year through so many additional programs and events, grand
Let's give them another round of applause.
openings and the like, and they always are excited for what we plan to offer, new programs, kind of the programs that we've been offering, but they're always present and supporting us.
The following presentation is recognition of the Police Department's Mothers Against
And I'd also just like to really support my staff here and thank them for all the work that they do. It's been an amazing year for us, and this is only a very small part of us, but they're
Drunk Driving Awareness.
fantastic. They're great sports, as you can tell, and I just want to give them a big thank you
Councilmember Thornton will present certificates of recognition to Officer Kevin Seguin, Officer
from me.
Jason Slover, Officer Andrew Galbreth, Officer Aurelien Verde, and Officer Scott Anderson.
Do you gentlemen want to head on forward? Let's give them a hand. And also our Chief Lilliver. Tonight we recognize a few of Moreno Valley's finest. It is my pleasure to introduce the Moreno Valley Police Department Honoris from this year's Mother Against Drunk Driving Awards Gala held on March 21st, 2019. Mothers Against Drunk Driving is a nonprofit organization in the United States and was founded on September 5th, 1980. Their mission is to end drunk driving, support those affected by drunk driving, prevent underage drinking, and strive for stricter impaired driving policy. The gala luncheon was held at Chaffee College and recognized efforts of Riverside and San Bernardino County law enforcement officers. Five deputies from the City of Moreno Valley were recognized for a combined total of 237 DUI arrests. These deputies worked tirelessly to keep our roads safe and safe in service of their community. We appreciate their individual efforts as well as their combined accomplishments. We are here today to thank them for their service. And I'm gonna go ahead and list the amount of arrests. So Officer Kevin Seguin has 85 DUI arrests for 2018. Officer Jason Slover has 46 DUI arrests. Officer Andrew Galbreth has 44 DUI arrests. Officer Aurelien Perday has 35 DUI arrests. And Officer Scott Anderson has 27 DUI arrests. On behalf of the City of Moreno Valley, we thank you all for what you do, and together we can achieve a future of no more victims. So let's give them a hand applause. And also want to give Chief, you want to say something?
It's with great honor that we recognize these fine gentlemen and all that they do. They not only serve in making DUI arrests and keeping our streets safe and saving lives out there, but they also are a very integral part of our accident investigation team. So they see what DUI drivers do to people, to young babies, to every age there is out there and what happens during these DUI crashes. So these gentlemen know what it does to save lives arresting drunk drivers, and my hat's off to them. And Mothers Against Drunk Driving really appreciates their hard work, so. Very good, sir.
The final presentation is recognition of the Volunteer of the Year. If we can have Pamela Lowell step up, please. Alizette, if you can join us. Chief Ahmad, thank you so much. Pamela Lowell joined the Emergency Response Force, ERF, group in 2015 and joined the ACES, RACES, Emergency Communications Group in 2018. She is also a volunteer for the Moreno Valley Police Department. Pam has remained active throughout her five years as part of the Emergency Response Force. She is certified CPR and first aid responder, trained in shelter operations, and holds a ham amateur radio license. She has responded to emergency calls and activations by providing support services to our fire and police personnel during emergency incidents. During the 2017 and 2018 storm events, she was providing support in the city's Emergency Operations Center, answering phones, monitoring our radio communications, and providing support to the EOC staff. Pamela is active in our outreach programs throughout the city. During the Public Safety Expo, she provided logistical support and public education during the event. She also volunteered with first aid and rehabilitation at our Fourth of July Parade and Fun Fest and the Springtastic Festival and Egg Hunt. Additionally, she has trained students at our local high schools on how to utilize fire extinguishers and provided support to our Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. She remains involved with multiple wellness and public education events throughout the year. Lastly, during the holidays, she is active in supporting our Spark of Love toy drive. Pamela continues to be a vital part of our ERF and RACES team by maintaining her skills by attending the specialized training we provide and require of all our team members. Congratulations to Pamela as a Volunteer of the Year. Your service and continued education is greatly appreciated. Here tonight, we have Suzette Bricker, Emergency Management Program Manager, and if you can please say a few words.
Pam is truly an amazing part of our team, our family. Everything that she does for us, she was actually quite upset when she had gotten hurt last year and wasn't able to provide the nonstop help that she normally does. We kept telling her, "Just get better, just get better." She is truly an amazing asset to our team, and I don't know what we would do without her. Besides the training that she helps us support throughout the city, she also is eager to attend any training that we're willing to send her out to, so she's truly an amazing asset to us. Thank you, Pam. And we have a nice plaque here for you, for your outstanding contribution of time, talent, enthusiasm to the citizens of Moreno Valley.
And on behalf of the city, we have a proclamation for you. And would you like to say a few words, Chief?
Well, Suzette rattled off a lot of things that Pam does on a voluntary basis to support our program. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations on your award tonight.
Being selected as the Volunteer of the Year is a very high, great honor to me. I'm only glad that in all of my years that I've been able to give back to my community that I've called home for 34 years. And I'm very proud to be a member of the Fire Department's Emergency Response Force. Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members, and everyone responsible for this reward. It is something very special to me that I will always treasure.
And that concludes our special presentations for the evening. The regular City Council meeting will reconvene at 6:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Service District, City as Accessory Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call the meeting to order on June 18th, 2019 at 6:04 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Robert Harris, and please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Minister Lockman of First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I want to call all of your attention to that beautiful signal above City of Moreno Valley. Let's say it together. In God we trust. Heavenly Father, we come to you trusting in you, knowing your tremendous blessings on our city. Thank you for blessing us with a fine city, fine staff, fine council members, and we pray, Lord, for your direction and guidance in this meeting as in all meetings, that we may glorify your name and help all of the members and all of the citizens of our dear city. And Lord, just guide us this evening as we plan deliberate make decisions. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris and Pastor Lockman. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Thornton.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baca.
Here.
Let the record reflect, Mayor Gutierrez is absent.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Huck is not a city clerk.
Renee Bryant, management aide.
Marshall Ironman, chief financial officer, city treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, city attorney.
Tom DeSantis, city manager.
Alan Brock, assistant city manager.
Mike Lee, economic and development director.
Rick Sandsamire, community development director.
Dave Lilliver, acting chief of police.
Abdul Alamit, fire chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, director of human resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, director of public works, city engineer.
Thank you. The city is currently offering Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out at the back of the room. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards others, especially towards the individuals at the podium that are speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting, and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But we can accomplish more as a city and as private citizens by being civil and respectful towards one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff reports and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the city council may speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the city council. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when your name is called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments, and any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. The first order of business is item G1, and I would like to pull the item and direct staff to reopen an RFP and seek bids. Do you have consensus?
I'm willing to support this. I would like assurances that we can move quickly to reopen and close the RFP with staff, be able to bring this back by April 20th, August 20th, for the next city council meeting.
I don't believe we will be able to open it right away. The process will require, because this is such an extensive work product, we need to give respondents time to prepare very quality, high-quality proposals, and then have a thorough review process. But I do give the council assurance that we will reopen the RFP. If that's your direction, we will reopen the RFP process at once.
Do you mind if we ask some questions of staff? Yeah, just very briefly. What was the approximate time last time in October of 2017, I think it was, when we first opened the RFP? How long did it take approximately from when we opened the RFP, when we issued it, to getting the bids in and selecting one firm?
We were, if the date of the RFP went out on October, I'm trusting that's the date that it went out, we were ready to go at a city council meeting in January. So it would have been October, November, just three months.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. And that's the only question I have. Other than that, I definitely want to make sure that this general plan update gets done. And so I would rather it not take longer, but I want to make sure that we do pick the strongest firm to achieve the goals that we have set. So if that's the case, I think this would be the second time that we open this up again. So I'm looking forward to on August 20th, having a firm selected so we can go ahead and move forward. I don't want to postpone this.
Councilman, per the timeline that Rick just mentioned, if in fact the other one started in October, we're ready in January, we can't start in June and be ready in August. It will be no earlier than September, but I do assure you, we will go just as fast, and we also want to be thorough, and we'll get you a good product.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have consensus?
Just for Mayor Protem, if I could, could we get a motion and a vote on this item, please, just to formalize matters?
Okay, I entertain a motion to postpone this or pull it and direct staff to reopen the RFP and seek bids. Motion by Councilmember Thornton. A second by Councilman Cabrera. Do you have a...
Roll call is fine.
Okay. It says yes.
Yeah, it's because you're sitting in the seat, I think that's the reason. Thank you very much.
Do we have any speaker requests?
Yes, we have four.
Can you please call them?
Keith, Howerton, Daryl Tarrell, Rafael Burguerras, and Bob Palomares.
This is kind of the most patriotic part of the year, you know, with Memorial Day. We just had Flag Day, and then next month we'll have Independence Day. And I came across something that made it a little more memorial to me, and I hope maybe it does to others. The title is "American Military Buried on European Soil." This is World War I, World War II. There are two cemeteries in England where there are 4,280 Americans buried. One cemetery in Luxembourg has 5,076 buried. One cemetery in the Netherlands has 8,301 buried. And in the Netherlands, every one of the men buried in the cemetery, as well as those in the Canadian and British military cemetery, have been adopted by a Dutch family who mined the grave, decorated, and keep alive the memory of the soldier they have adopted. It is even customary to keep a portrait of their American soldier in place of honor in their home. There are two cemeteries. Italy has 12,263. Three cemeteries in Belgium have 13,707. One cemetery in Muzo, uh, Ngon has 14,246. One of the cemeteries in Belgium has 13,707. One cemetery in Muzo, uh, Ngon has 14,246.
What was the approximate time last time in October of 2017, I think it was, when we first opened the RFP? About how long did it take approximately from when we opened the RFP, when we issued it, to getting the bids in and selecting one firm?
We were, if the date of the RFP went out on October, I'm trusting that's the date that it went out, we were ready to go at a city council meeting in January. It would have been October, November, just three months.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. And that's the only question I have. Other than that, I definitely want to make sure that this general plan update gets done. And so, I would rather it not take longer, but I want to make sure that we do pick the strongest firm to achieve the goals that we have set. So, if that's the case, I think this would be the second time that we open this up again. So, I'm looking forward to on August 20th, having a firm selected so we can go ahead and move forward. I don't want to postpone this.
Councilmen, per the timeline that Rick just mentioned, if in fact the other one started in October, we're ready in January, we can't start in June and be ready in August. It will be no earlier than September, but I do assure you, we will go just as fast, and we also want to be thorough, and we'll get you a good product.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we have consensus?
Just for Mayor Pro Tem, if I could, could we get a motion and a vote on this item, please, just to formalize matters?
Okay. I entertain a motion to postpone this or pull it and direct staff to reopen the RFP and seek bids. Motion by Councilmember Thornton. Second by Councilman Cabrera. Do you have a...
Roll call is fine.
Right there.
Okay. It says yes.
Yeah, it's because you're sitting in the seat, I think that's the reason. Thank you very much.
Do we have any speaker requests?
Yes, we have four.
Can you please call them?
Keith, Howerton, Daryl Terrell, Rafael Burguerras, and Bob Palomares.
Counsel, I, this is kind of the most patriotic part of our, of the year, you know, with Memorial Day. We just had Flag Day, and then next month we'll have Independence Day. And I came across something that made it a little more memorial to me, and I hope maybe it does to others. It was, the title's "American Military Buried on European Soil." This is World War I, World War II. There are two cemeteries in England where there are 4,280 Americans buried. One cemetery in Luxembourg has 5,076 buried. One cemetery in the Netherlands has 8,301 buried. And in the Netherlands, every one of the men buried in the cemetery, as well as those in the Canadian and British military cemetery, have been adopted by a Dutch family, who mined the grave, decorated, and keep alive the memory of the soldier they have adopted. It is even customary to keep a portrait of their American soldier in place of honor in their home. There are two cemeteries. Italy has 12,263. Three cemeteries in Belgium have 13,707. One cemetery in Muzo, uh, Ngon has 14,246. And ten cemeteries in France have 46,511 Americans buried there. So, brings a total of 104,384 American soldiers who did not come home, which reminds us once again that freedom is not free.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Daryl Terrell.
Daryl Terrell, Rafael Burguerras, Bob Palomares.
My name is Daryl Terrell. I live here in Moreno Valley. Our community has been on my mind lately. Couple of days ago, after loading a customer's barbecue grill in their SUV, I looked towards the mountain at the M. I thought about what lies over the horizon for us as a city. As I re-entered the store, I saw Old Glory, a constant reminder of our journey from 13 colonies to a nation united in freedom and liberty. A constant reminder how blessed I was to live in this great country and to call our community home for the last 31 years. It's a reminder that we are all part of the mobile, one mobile family. Our destiny stitched together like those 50 stars and 13 stripes behind you, bound together by a love for this community and the faith in this future. While we may not see eye to eye on everything, but I still believe there is so much that unites us and divides us. I've seen it in our parents in every corner of this community, who sometimes work two or three jobs, travel long distances to work every day, just trying to build a better future for their kids. I've seen it when we put our differences aside to find common ground in times of trial and the times of tragedy. I've seen it in our immigrants striving to live their American dream, and our police officers and firefighters who go into harm's way to protect us. We believe in the same promise that says that this is a city where you can make it if you try. We believe in the same dream that says this is a city where anything is possible, no matter who you are, where you came from, or your religion. That what binds us together as one people and one community. The task of getting to our new horizon is not going to be easy, but should serve as an inspiration that brings us together as a community in doing big things. I want to share a story with you. When President Kennedy looked to the heavens and set our sights on the moon, he knew getting there wasn't going to be easy. Some people thought it was a crazy idea when our country had just 15 minutes of man-flight experience in space. NASA had neither a plan or a rocket. Their own engineers were deeply skeptical. The science wasn't even there. But President Kennedy understood that the character of our people he led. He knew that we as a people with that candle spirit can do big things, reach great heights, rise to any challenges, and defy the odds to fashion our future. That's what we have to do in Moreno Valley. We are in it together. We rise and fall together as one people and one community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening, Pro Tem, Victoria Bacca, councilmembers, staff, resident guests. I come to talk to the residents of Moreno Valley for the parade on July the 4th. Please, come. Daryl just gave us an educational thing about America, how great it is, how Moreno Valley is part of that greatness. We can celebrate it on July the 4th, all together as a family in the City of Moreno Valley. You make this city what it is when you come out and take part of everything that we do in the parks, wrecks, and trails. That is a very important department. They just got a greater walk, once again, recognition by the mayor and the council members and the staff and their colleagues. This is what they do in the City of Moreno Valley. They bring laughter, fun, and memories. Come out, July the 4th, enjoy, and also we'll meet each other at Morrison Park for the lighting and the fireworks and all the food and the music. This is your moment. This is our moment for you to come out and enjoy our city more than ever. We have a lot of new residents in this city. Please, join us. We've been here for a little while. We've got great law enforcement, the fire department, the medic, everybody's going to be there to make sure that we're safe. So, come out, have fun with us. I'll see you at the parade, and I'll see you at the fireworks. Please come out, July the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Burguerras. Bob Palomares.
Good evening, Counsel. Mayor Pro Tem. I seen on the agenda 11, the request for city sponsorship of the Southwest Veterans Business Resource. And I think Dr. Thornton probably has something to do with that. It's good to see that we're pushing more things for the veterans. There was a time when they came here, and there was two council members that refused to assist them, assist them in what they were asking for. It was very minor. You know, you should never tell a veteran no when he's asking for a hand. But the reason I'm up here is, last council meeting, David Marcus had made a statement that he does more than any council member should have to do. I didn't know there was a limit. You took an oath you should help regardless. The mayor appointed you to committees and commissions, and you gave him up. But you'd go out of your district into someone else's district and sell your vote to a developer. You know, David, you got to get with it, because 90% of the time you vote no, because maybe it's an idea of one of the other council members or the mayor.
Please direct your comments to the council, please.
So, anyway, you need to get it together, David. You know, we've got some people that are doing some terrific things in this city along with staff, and you seem to be the one that's always dragging or opposing it. I'll just get with it. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comments. Would any council member like to make their reports and comments at this time?
Pro Tem, Luis.
Pardon me?
Luis Palomares.
Oh, I didn't see her up there. Okay, there she is. Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. I'm going to address it to the council. I'm going to talk about David Marcus, because last meeting, he was talking about it's too much money, you know, to give the mayor a higher stipend. Oh, it's just too much. How noble of him. He said that he wanted to donate his pay, but it was against the law. Well, there's a supervisor in Riverside County donates his whole pay, and it's not against the law, David Marcus. You're lying again. You know, and he gives to charities. Oh, let's see your taxes then, Trump? I don't really think so. I don't believe that one. And another thing, I mean, it doesn't end. He votes no on everything, everything. He's an obstructionist, obstructionist in this city. Everything that the other council members are voting to go and run with that into the 21st century, and the staff doing an excellent job on top of it, he's against. He was over there getting glory at the skate park when him and Guyva voted against it, like they did against the Canyon Springs stadium over there. I, I, I mean, I don't believe it, the hypocrisy. How far does it go? Doesn't end with David Marcus. It's a darn shame that we want to get going, and we're running with the ball, and we're making those touchdowns and those field goals and everything it takes to get this city going, but you got one straggler here that votes against everything. Because if it's not a David Marcus idea or an old Guyva idea, it's not a good idea. Come on. Get with it is right. Saying all that, I think I said almost everything I had to say, but, you know, I don't believe this. I don't believe this council member, David Marcus. You know, I hope, I hope, and I challenge you to donate your whole paycheck. Donate it to nonprofits. I dare you. I challenge you to do it. Do it. I doubt it very much. And, oh, I mean, you're so noble. Oh, no, no. I don't want, I don't do it for this, and I don't do it for that. Well, good, good for you, but put your money where your mouth is. You know, put your money where your mouth is, because you're not for this city like you say you are, because you're against everything this council and this staff and even the community tries to do. You're involved in recall tents, you're about slandering the council, the rest of your council members, the mayor. I mean, come on, because you belong to the liars' club, the 666 club. The obstruction is in Moreno Valley. Shame on you. You don't deserve to be on that seat. And my, that's my opinion. You know, you, you only pledge allegiance to a handful of people, like the Ladanas and the like, the Prizes and like the, all those naysayers, the liars' club. You know, that's who your allegiance belongs to. I mean, golly, grow up. Get with it.
Thank you, Ms. Palomares. That now concludes the public comments, okay? Would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time? Okay, we're going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through E on the agenda. Staff has requested, in coordination with the applicant, that item number A3 be removed from the agenda and not, A13 be removed from the agenda and not considered tonight. And City Attorney, do you have a correction for A33?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, council members, on the exhibit C1 to the contract, the final draft will reflect the annual amount of the contract per the staff report versus the complete total for the contract over five years. So, we'll make that correction before the contract is executed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does the council have any items they would like to remove for a separate action?
Yes, I do.
I do as well.
What are they?
A5 for a separate vote and A6 for a separate vote.
Councilman Cabrera?
A23 for a separate vote and A30 for a comment.
I'm sorry, the first one was?
A23.
A33?
A23 for a separate vote and A30 for comment.
Okay, let's start with A30 for a comment.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, so, just so everybody's aware, you know, our Parks Department has been doing a lot, and they've been shorthanded. And so, part of this item is to go ahead and bring on another member for our team. And, you know, we have a ton of events happening throughout the year, so I just want to point this out, because our Parks Department is going to have more help for all of the events that we have coming throughout the summer. So, you know, as always, we expect a lot from our entire team, and so I'm looking forward to what this new employee will bring to our city, all the expertise that she will bring to our city. And, you know, we're expecting a lot, as always. So, I just wanted to point that one out.
City Council comments, questions, or unconsent items for discussion? Public comments on consent items?
Yes, Luis Palomares.
On which item?
A5. It was pulled for a separate vote, so we can, she can talk then.
Is that it?
That's it.
So, I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with exception of A5, A6, A23, and the correction to A33. Motion by Cabrera.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thornton. Please vote.
Motion passes, five eyes. Can I have, it's not showing on the screen. I mean, sorry, four eyes. Can I just have you voice vote, because it's showing on my screen, but it's not showing on the screen?
As long as it's confirmed by the clerk, there's not a necessity for an actual voice vote. So, the motion passes 4-0.
Okay, we're moving on to item F, public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on public hearings matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a goldenrod speaker slip to the sergeant at arms. F1, public hearing to adopt substantial amendment number two to the 2018-23 Consolidated Plan and 2018-2019 Action Plan. Report of Financial and Management Services, Marshall Ironman.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. The item this evening follows up on the third quarter budget adjustment where the city council approved an allocation of $800,000 to the CDBG program. The item this, tonight, is the substantial amendment to the Consolidated Plan and Action Plan. This would allocate those approximately $800,000 into two street segments. First segment being Hemlock Avenue from Pigeon Pass Road to Heacock Street, and the second section being from Cottonwood Avenue from Heacock to Indian. This would use those funds for street improvements and utilize some of the available funding that we have out there. The amendments are required to update the proper documentation with HUD and allow us to move forward. And with that, that completes my report.
Okay. Questions from the council to the staff? No questions? I have a question that's, sounds like it's very close to my home. Is there any conflict of interest for myself?
Law requires you to recuse yourself if it's within 500 feet of your home. I don't have any information, one way or the other, where it is. My advice would be to you to step down for the vote, just in case.
So, you want me to step outside?
Please.
Okay. So, I'll have Councilman Cabrera take over.
We'll give Mayor Pro Tem just a minute.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry, if I had, Mayor Pro Tem? I was just shown a map of the improvements, and they are not within 500 feet of your home. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. So, we'll open the hearing. Is there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
None.
No speakers? Hearing is closed. Council deliberation? None? I'll entertain a motion by the council to approve staff's recommendations number two and three. Moved by Councilmember Marquez, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote.
It's...
Do you want to do a voice vote?
A motion passes four eyes. It's just not going to show on the screen.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to item F2, public hearing to adopt substantial amendment number one to the 2018-23 Consolidated Plan Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Action Plan and amendment to the, number four, to the NSP III Program Guidelines. Report of Financial and Management Services, Marshall Ironman.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. During the Great Recession, the federal government issued some new grants, which were titled the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Out of the third series of that are what we refer to, the NSP III. Uh, out of the third series of that are what we refer to, the NSP three program. Uh, the city received approximately three point seven million dollars, uh, on that initial funding. Those funds, along with some program income received from that, uh, were utilized to provide essentially nineteen affordable housing units. A portion of that were through Habitat for Humanity to build project, and the other portions were used to basically purchase, rehab, and resell, uh, foreclosed homes within the community. Uh, this was a great program that allowed those affordable housing units moving forward, cleaned up the, kind of the environment in the neighborhoods while we rehab those units. Uh, and at this point, we're moving forward with the final steps on this grant for HUD. Um, really is the, the closeout proceedings that require us to kind of, um, align the numbers with how they proceeded. So, uh, what you'll see in there is a table that just really identifies the dollars that we spent for, uh, redevelopment programs, which were tied to the Habitat units and the other components really tied to the, um, purchase, rehab, and resale for the other units. Uh, it's really just a procedural item to allow us to move forward with modifying the consolidated plan and the actual plan for HUD and to file the, uh, last items to close out this grant. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ironman. Any, uh, questions from the council to staff? Seeing none, we'll open the hearing. Do we have any public testimony?
None.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations number two and three.
Move.
A motion by Ulysses Cabrera, Councilman Cabrera and Councilmember Thornton. Please vote.
Can we have a voice vote? Councilwoman Thornton? Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Motion passes four eyes.
Thank you. We'll move to item H, items removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate vote. These are three items for separate votes. I'll entertain a motion to approve item A five.
I think there was some public comment on one of those items, Mayor.
Yes, there was. Public comment, please.
Luis Palomares.
Are there other speakers?
She's the only one.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, it's great that the mayor's gonna have a little more money in his stifle. It's really great, and I'm all for that. Like I said at the last council meeting, it's a drop in the bucket compared to what a lot of other mayors get and for all that he gives and all that he does. He's always working, he's always trying to make things for our city better. He does so much, all the stuff for the students, all the stuff for the city, all the awards we get. I can't, I can't say enough. I mean, he does more and beyond the call of duty, if you ask me. And if he was a military man, I would call him a true Marine there. So, and then saying all that also, while, you know, Mr. Marcus says, David Marcus says, oh, no, it's too much, oh, no. And I'm sure he's against it, but like I said, you donate your pay, you know? I mean, you took, uh, three times ten thousand dollar, um, you know, donations, but, uh, you donate your pay. I don't think so. Okay, saying all that, you know, Marcus don't have a heart for the city.
Mayor Protem, she is out of order.
Wait a minute, I'm talking about this money here.
Let her speak, please.
It has nothing to do with me.
Stop the clock.
Let her speak. Go ahead.
Okay. It's about the money and it's about a raise for the, our mayor. Okay, it's all about the money. You know, where's the heart for our mayor? Marcus don't have a heart for the city, the mayor. He do- he does, he's a coward, like the cowardly lion in The Wizard of Oz. And if he only had a brain, it'd be great.
It's about the vote for the salary.
But in the end, all of those three got what they needed, but I don't know if this guy's ever gonna get it, Marcus. But I'm all for it. Give the, uh, the mayor what he's got coming and all he uses too, you deserve it. You know, so it, it's great that we're going down this road to make something happen positive for our city so we could keep on running, running with the dream and the vision that the mayor has for our city. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt, to approve item A five from the consent calendar. Motion by Councilmember Thornton. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
No.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Motion passes, three eyes, one no.
I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion to approve item A six. Motion by Councilmember Cabrera. Second by Councilmember Thornton, please vote.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
No.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Motion passes, three eyes, one no.
We'll now move to item I, reports. City Council?
A twenty-three was pulled as well.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item A twenty-three.
Mayor Protem, if I may, I would like to entertain, um, alternate motion and make a request, um, for the Library Commission as well as the Art Commission. Uh, I would like to, uh, request that I be appointed as the alternate for both of those. Um, so I would like to, um, make a motion that we approve item A twenty-three with those adjustments.
You wanna be the alternate for Library?
Arts and Library.
Mayor Protem, if, if I may be heard on this?
City Attorney, please.
Thank you. Um, first of all, these are mayor's appointments that are before the council for approval. Uh, so therefore, any, um, um, first of all, any changes should include him in consideration. Secondly, um, by an attorney general opinion, council is not empowered to make modifications to those appointments. Uh, it, it is a slate appointment. So, if the council desires to, um, have the mayor present and, and deliberating in this issue, my recommendation would be to have a motion to continue the item to the next council meeting. Except, uh, the, the times on these expire on June thirtieth, so that may create a timing problem.
Thank you, City Attorney, I, I was not aware of that. So, for now, let's go ahead and move forward with the item as presented, and we'll come back to this at a future meeting. Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve item A twenty-three. Motion made by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Thornton. Please vote.
Councilmember Thornton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Motion passes, four eyes.
Okay, so we'll move to item I, reports. We have the, uh, School District-City Joint Task Force. We'll have, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, who attended the, uh, Special Task Force with me today, do the report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, today we did have our Joint Task Force meeting here at the Conference and Recreation Center. And, uh, earlier today, uh, in addition to s- city representatives, uh, we also had representatives from Moreno Valley College, Moreno Valley Unified School District, Moreno Valley Police Department, and the Valverde Unified School District. And, um, a few of the things that we talked about, uh, specifically with Moreno Valley Unified and Valverde are the free meals that will be provided at various parks throughout the city. Uh, this is not the first year that we do this, uh, but if, if you haven't heard about it, please spread the word with your neighbors, in particular, especially the families that have children. Um, there will be free lunches for children age eighteen and under, and the meals are served Monday through Friday, uh, from now through August second. And, uh, that information for locations, you can find on our social media, on our website, um, so you can, uh, know what parks. Also, Valverde Unified School District's Police Department will be hosting a multi-agency active shooter scenario training on June twenty-sixth from eight AM to five PM at Orange Vista High School. And a few more things. Yeah, so a few of the programs for Valverde Unified School District, the summer school and extended school year programs at El Portero Preschool. Uh, there's an extended school year program on June tenth and July fifth. March Middle School and Bethune will also have the same program on June seventh, tenth, and July fifth. And Valverde Unified, Valverde Academy, um, will have the same program on June tenth and July fifth. And lastly, um, Valverde High School has a summer school and extended school year program on June seventh, June tenth, and July eleventh. And also, uh, I, I'll talk about this a little bit more in my closing comments, but the My Mobile Summit that's coming up pretty soon. Thank you, Marshall. And, um, Moreno Valley College, they had over twenty-five hundred degrees and certificates that were awarded in this past school year for two thousand eighteen. And that's actually a record, that's the most that they've awarded ever in the history of Moreno Valley. Uh, and that's a really good thing. A big part of that graduating class was, uh, individuals that went through Ben, Ben Clark Training Center. So that's a really good thing for us as far as getting, uh, more, uh, police officers, firefighters, medical personnel here in our community. So, I was really happy to see that, and every single year, the commencement, that field, they're gonna have to find a bigger location, because there's so many people that go out to that. So, um, that's all I have for the Joint Task Force meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cabrera. Uh, next is our City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to begin by thanking you, Mayor Protembaka, for, uh, guiding us through tonight's meeting. As, at the last meeting before the end of the fiscal year, there were a lot of moving parts, and I appreciate your patience with us and, uh, and getting us through all these items tonight. I'd like to wish a, uh, happy and safe summer to residents of all ages in our community and, uh, want to assure them that while we won't be having council meetings, uh, we won't, there were a few council meetings won't be held this summer, their city hall remains open every day, Monday through Friday, and our services continue twenty-four seven. Uh, staff, uh, at all levels will be here every day, and I know based on past experience, council members will be here, uh, actually even more often, uh, during the summer, meeting with staff, meeting with residents, and attending the city business. Um, and, uh, last comment is, uh, we look forward to getting Summer Off to an amazing start with our signature events on July fourth. I encourage residents, come and join us at, uh, nine thirty AM, uh, for the parade. At two PM, the Fun Fest begins over at Morrison Park and fireworks at nine. And, uh, thank you in advance to the Parks Department, Public Works, Police, uh, and, and everyone else from all the other departments who, uh, who contribute to make that signature event so special. I know this will, you, this will be the best year ever. Encourage everyone to come. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney, report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem, council members. I'm, I'm very pleased to inform you that with the assistance of our police department and the code enforcement, we have successfully shut down all of the illegal dispensaries that we are aware of in the city.
Thank you so much.
We have obtained preliminary injunctions, and we will continue to obviously be vigilant, monitor for any new activity. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to reports and comments from council members. We'll start with, uh, Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I encourage everybody to come out and bring your water with you for Fourth of July. It's gonna be, it's gonna be probably a warm day, but it's, it's a great event area of the city. That fireworks show is just awesome. Uh, make sure your dogs and cats and their little ones are, have earmuffs on them, so they won't get scared away. I wanna comment on a, uh, comments that were made tonight by, um, two individuals. I was told not to say anything, but, uh, I, I think maybe I can put this to rest. Several years ago, before I was on the console, these two individuals knew who I was. They also knew my relationship with Mayor Protem. People don't understand. Back then, Mayor Protem worked for me as a consultant for my granddaughter. And I terminated her. And things turned pretty bad. And it's gotten worse over the years. But like I tell my family, just keep on moving forward. These two individuals that come up here on a, every Tuesday to knock me down, it doesn't bother me. They're encouraged to do that by one of my colleagues up here. And that's fine. Mayor Protem knows about my finances, and that's where these individuals got their information from. I donate a lot of money, I do. But I don't have, nothing to prove to these individuals. And yes, I made a comment that I was told it was illegal against the law for me to donate my pay, payroll money. And that, that was a misunderstanding on my part. I was misguided several years ago. It wasn't illegal, it just wasn't proper to do it. I do donate some of my funds. And a lot of my, my own private money also. But, you know what? I'm here to do one thing for the city, is to run it the best I can. And I ain't going nowhere until my election's up. Thank you.
Councilmember Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I wanted to announce I'm having a meeting greet at West Bluff Park, which is located in District Two, July thirteenth, uh, from ten thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. Um, it's been posted on social media and, uh, uh, it's also on my Facebook page. So, if anyone wants to talk to me in person, they can, uh, reach me there. Also, we do have a, a number of vacancy appointments on our commissions and boards. If you just go to movial.org, um, you'll be able to find a list of vacancies. Um, you can download the application there and, uh, and c- or come into City Hall and turn the application in. But we are looking for, um, residents who want to be involved in public service. I sat on the environmental board and historical preservation board for five years and also the traffic commission, and I learned a lot about the city. So, for those who want to get engaged, um, in the city, uh, those are, that's a great avenue. So please submit your application. Lastly, we had a, another shooting last week, uh, in District Two in Lake Shore Village, which is a shopping center located in the Sunny Meat Ranch area. Um, and, um, you know, crime is persisting and these violent crimes, um, it doesn't seem to be going away. And so, there's numerous reasons why crimes like, like this occur, um, and a lot of blame and, and finger pointing gets done. Um, but there's two things that we could actually do as Moreno Valley residents. One is, there is a pipeline, um, issue concerning deputies. We need more deputies on the street. So, when people say, oh, where are the deputies at, we need more patrol, well, we need them to become deputies. So, Riverside Sheriff is always consistently recruiting. If you can go to riversidesheriff.org, um, and, and not only just deputies, but across the board. Uh, Sheriff Bianco has mentioned numerous times, they're looking for vacancies at all levels. So, if you're interested in, in getting into law enforcement, um, and, um, working in your community or in, in Riverside County, there is an opportunity there. Lastly, I wanna employ, you know, when I first moved Moreno Valley back in ninety-four, on my street, we had a neighborhood watch. Right? We need to, um, start actively, um, um, being aware of our environment and our neighborhood. So I wanna encourage any residents in District Two or even throughout Moreno Valley who are interested in starting a neighborhood watch, watch program to reach our, to reach out to our, um, Moreno Valley Police. Um, there, they have an entire program that they can explain to you on how to get it started. But that's another component, um, that you, that we see, that if there's a neighborhood watch where residents are looking out for each other, neighbors are looking out for each other, crime seems to decrease in that area. So I wanna employ, um, residents of our cities to, um, to start a neighborhood watch program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Thornton. Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And, um, well, today was, uh, first for a few things. I mean, I, I got to be chair for about five seconds, so thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, but, uh, to follow up on Councilmember Thornton's comments, I'm a hundred percent on board with trying to make the city safer. Um, wanna just comment on a few things there to add my two cents. Uh, with the neighborhood watches, I believe, um, the captains meet once a quarter, if I remember correctly, is, uh, is when they're scheduled to meet. I've been to one of them, I wish it could have been more, uh, but I, I'll do my best to be at future meetings. And so, you know, the neighborhood watches are out there, but I think the bigger issue is like the follow-up. So, they're established, they're put together. So, they're established, they're put together, but there's really no leader that is making the phone calls, emailing, and saying, hey, we're gonna meet again. Let's meet at this location, and getting everyone together. So, if that's something that we can work on together, to make sure that we follow up with our residents and try to strengthen those neighborhood watches that are currently established, and establish new ones as well. I'm 100% on board with you on that one. Also, the cops and clergy, they meet once a month on the second Mondays here at, usually the police department, but the last meeting, they actually switched over to meeting at an actual church, which, from what I hear, I was not able to make it, but it was very well attended, like one of the best ever since we've had cops and clergy. So, maybe that change of location had something to do with it. And hopefully, more council members can come out to those meetings as well. Because the, the clergy, the churches, the faith community here is extremely important to have those partnerships with them, because it's a huge community. So, we need to be able to work with them as well. And Chief Lelavere, I know that you're completely open to that as well. So, thank you for being there every single time, you know, way more than I am, and, and I'll try to be there for the next one as well. Other than that, I'll try to go through this quick. To, to reduce crime and homelessness, I, I made comments last time as well, as far as identifying the factors that allow for the growth of loitering and panhandling and homelessness, in particular to a certain area, concentrating to a certain area. And I like to ask a lot of questions, as staff probably knows. But one of the, the factors is recycling centers, for example. And so, I brought this up last time, but looking at our zoning, and this is probably best suited to fit into our general plan update, to look at the zoning for recycling centers, smoke shops, liquor stores, even motels, right? So, we, we need to take a look at that, because tho- those have a lot to do with concentrating certain groups of people, like homeless, or, or also criminals in certain areas. So, um, that's one of the things that I've been looking at in my research. So, just a, just a thought, I'll come back at a future meeting with, with actual policy. Next, the Moreno Valley College graduations that happened. I just want to reiterate, it was the largest class ever. And at today's joint task force meeting, the college shared with us that the comprehensive master plan was officially approved by the board. So, now they can move forward with that. Hopefully, we can implement it into our general plan update as well. And the most exciting part, I think for me, they're gonna have sports and theater and everything, but they're gonna have a new library as well. It's gonna be right off of La Salle. And they're also bringing in a new makerspace. So, they're trying to push more entrepreneurship, and, and I love that. That's what we need more of, and pushing the CTE programs as well. So, I'm looking forward to working closer with them as time goes on. Yesterday, I also had a, an opportunity, I'm very grateful, to be able to go on a ride along with one of our lieutenants here in the police department. If you have not gotten an opportunity to do that, I highly recommend it. You know, right now, in our country, the rhetoric and the perspective of law enforcement, from my, from my opinion, is, is not that good. It could be much better for different reasons. But being able to go out there and be in the passenger seat of a deputy car changes the way you look at it, definitely for me. Responding to the calls, seeing how many calls are in their log on their computer at a time. And so, you'll understand, I mean, the, these are, they're humans, just like us up here. They have families, they have wives, they have husbands, they have children. So, we need to be able to understand what they go through as well. And I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to go along with one of our lieutenants. Just a few quick reminders, Farmer's Market every Thursday at, uh, right here, right behind the Conference and Rec Center, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. What else? The Community hike, I'm working on another one, coming pretty soon, hopefully within the next month and a half or so. It's gonna be hot, yes, but that's why we go early. Six in the morning, we're going up the mountain already, so we avoid the snakes. That's, that's the whole point of it. And yeah, 4th of July, you know, it's a time for families to come together. That's the last point that I want to make before we go on recess, the family, and the institution that we call the family. And being able to keep families together, not separating them. And so, it's, it's vital, it's absolutely vital for things like crime, and things like educational attainment, and, and, and economic development. Keeping the family together, having parents with their children, so that they can develop and grow and care for one another, so that the child has both in their lives. So, just want to make that point. You know, I, I love my family. I know that probably all of us do. And definitely look forward to seeing you on 4th of July. Have a good summer.
Thank you, Councilman Cabrera. So, this is our last meeting for this fiscal year. We'll start again in August. And I just want to say thank you to our city manager, our staff, our police chief, our fire chief, and the community, everyone that makes things happen here in Moreno Valley. As most of you know, the 4th of July is my favorite holiday. And I just think it's a day where we're really not giving anyone any gifts, really. And, uh, but the family is together, and we're having so much fun. And in Moreno Valley, we have Halloween in July. So, please come out to the 4th of July parade, because every single car is throwing candy out to the kids. Parents, please keep your kids safe. You know, I know they come out to the street to gather their candies. Bring bags with you, because there's lots of candy, and have lots of fun. Then, join us at 2:00 at Morrison Park, where we'll have lots of food, lots of entertainment. But the best part for me is that we have live bands, and you'll have people, you know, dancing on the grass and having a good time. And for, for those of you that are really thirsty, we also have a beer garden. So, please join us. On behalf of all the dogs and cats in Moreno Valley, I want to remind you, and remind your friends and neighbors and your family, that fireworks are illegal in Moreno Valley. And I know my dogs beg to come in early, because the firecrackers, fireworks start like at noon around my neighborhood. So, Chief Lelavere, you know, [laughing] please come by. But, um, you know, think about that. And we also have a lot of veterans that suffer from PTSD that are affected by the fireworks. We're gearing up to also celebrate El Grito, which is always on September 15th, in collaboration with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Mexican consulate, Moreno, uh, Moreno Valley College, and the city, our staff. And we put on a great, great event, so be ready for that. And as far as the comments by Councilmember Marquez, from the bottom of my heart, I apologize to anyone that has to hear this, and you saw his outburst today. Maybe the city manager can get some training for him, League of Cities or something, because we need help up here. So, I apologize for the outburst tonight. And I just want to say, we're still here during the summer. Come visit us. We have more time, because, well, like the mayor and myself, we work for the school districts. I think, are you still working through the summer? No? Councilmember Thornton? Councilman Cabrera, he's, he's, he's at work all the time. But we'll be here more often to serve the community. Any questions, call us. Our city clerk is always ready to put you on our calendar. So, thank you so much, and we'll see you back in late August. Our meeting is adjourned at 7:03 PM.